My name is Rich Nagel and mayor and I'll be presiding. This time I'll call a meeting to order and if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If everyone has signed in, if you aren't signed in, I'd appreciate it. The clipboard is at the end of the table. All right, call the roll. Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Sharpie.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmembers Morgan and Batchor will not be in attendance this evening. Also at the table on my left, City Administrator Newsom. On my right, City Attorney Arnison. The agenda. Any additions, changes?
I have several changes.
Okay, go ahead.
Under four, I would like to remove F and G.
Okay. My pen is dried up.
You say remove?
Remove F and G. Number, under number eight, I would like to add D, which is the energy adjustment clause from MMPA. There's a copy in front of all of you and there's a copy up at the front. I would like to add E, the February fifteenth Shade Tree Committee minutes. And letter F, a letter from Resident Carol Mader. She asked to share with the council. And then, under number nine, I would like to add, under Kirby's report, to approve or deny a bid for Centra Pro. And the second bid is for Dan Coe. Both the bids are in front of you. It's for painting at the community center and Kirby will go over that when he gives his report.
And where does that go again, under?
Nine A.
Nine A.
The two bids.
All right, anything else? I would like to add ten B, removed from the table. That would be a motion that's necessary to follow through with those ordinances that are being proposed this evening. That was tabled, as you remember. We will need a motion and a second and a vote to remove that from the table so that we can move forward with discussing and acting on those or having the first reading of those ordinances. Anything else? Okay, a motion is in order then to approve the agenda with the changes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sharpie, second by Councilmember Thomas to approve the agenda with the noted changes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening consists of the following items. Item A, approval of the bills. Item B, approval of the February seventh, twenty twenty-two city council workshop minutes. Item C, February seventh, twenty twenty-two city council minutes. Item D, February eleventh, twenty twenty-two special city council minutes. And lastly, item E, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two city council minutes. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Meyer, second by Councilmember Sharpie to appoint the consent agenda. As read, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. All right, this time I would like to turn it over to City Administrator, or City, I'm sorry, City Attorney Arnison for some comments regarding the comments that were received in the public.
At a recent council meeting, two members of the public appeared and expressed their opinion that the mayor, the city council, the city administrator have somehow failed in their duties or violated procedures in various ways. And one of those citizens filed a written complaint. I reviewed the situation, looked at previous meeting tapes, consulted the League of Cities. My conclusion is that those allegations are totally unfounded. I, my opinion is the mayor, the council, the city administrator have carried out their duties in a proper manner. There's been no violation of city employee policy. And it's my suggestion to the council that those comments be viewed accordingly. I didn't want those comments to be just left hanging in space. I think they caught the council by surprise. And I think on further reflection, I think the council would agree with my comments.
Okay, thank you for that. Item six, addressing the council. Anyone present this evening that wishes to address the council? Yes, come forward, please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, if you want to state your name, please.
Yeah, I'm Darryl Thorne. I'm from Greendale Township.
Just the light on.
Hit the button.
Yeah.
There we go. That's much better. So I'm Darryl Thorne from Greendale Township. And I want to address the council because I read in the newspaper that City Administrator Amy Newsom had submitted her resignation. And I would like the council to take under consideration everything that Amy has done for this community in her tenure. She has brought numerous amounts of business into this, this area with two twelve coming in. And it looks to be completed earlier than the projected twenty twenty-five. Arlington and Greendale in this Highway five corridor stands to benefit greatly from that. And in order for us to, to really drive the most that we can, we need an individual that has the understanding and skill sets to bring in business and to promote that. And the City Administrator Amy Newsom has those skill sets. So I highly encourage that this council, take a look at, where do we want the city of Arlington to go? What would it take to bring someone with the skill sets and the talents that Amy has back into the city administrator position? Would it be the same? And bringing in somebody new, understanding what the area is, is going to take time. And so Arlington loses that time in order to bring new business into Arlington. So I highly encourage this city council to reflect on the achievements that Amy has made and that we ask her to reconsider to remain on as our administrator. Thank you.
Thank you, Darryl.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council this time? Pull the microphone close.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Brandon Brickman, mayor. We run, Grand K runs a small Bitcoin mining operation in Arlington. Right now, we're using about twenty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty kilowatt hours. Running us right around three thousand dollars a month. Projected on the statements that I found on the, through the city office, at twenty-five thousand kilowatt hours, large cap, I should be getting charged like a little over seven cents a kilowatt. We're getting charged a little over eleven.
Brad, Brad, can I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
You are on the agenda for a little later.
Oh, am I?
It was just pointed out to me that.
You guys are off.
But you know, we'll continue this.
To be continued, huh?
Thank you very much.
We'll, we'll ask you to start over probably.
I will.
Sorry about that. Anyone else wish to speak to the council? Seeing none, we will move on. Item eight, communications.
We have the planning and zoning minutes from January sixth on the agenda. Dave, who's new, we put the minutes of committees on as communications. So councilmembers know what was happening at those committees. That was a problem that the city had in the past. It was lacking communication between the different committees and council. So read them. If you have questions, let me know or whoever's in charge of that, Phil or myself, let me know. We have the January tenth EDA minutes. We have the February twenty twenty-two MMPA board summary. That's the public summary presented to us by MMPA. We have the energy adjustment clause, which was handed out for March. We have the February fifteenth Shade Tree Committee minutes. And we have a letter from Carol Mader that she asked to share with the public and the city council. If you have questions on any of those items, please let me know.
Okay, any questions so far? All right, let's move on to item nine, Public Works Report, Kirby Whitworth. Good evening, Kirby.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor. Good evening. All right, so I'll run through my update first and then we'll do the bids. Okay. All right. Over the last month or so, we've had kind of one major snow emergency, I guess I'd call it. And then a handful of smaller pesky ones. So that kind of has kept us busy, of course. Daniel, in particular, was busy with some events up at the community center here with prepping and cleaning up afterwards. He's taking a lot of his time and then it's kind of time of the year that snow equipment maintenance is needed. So I've spent some time in the shop working on that. I also finished up some minor shop improvements in our yearly cleaning that we do down there as well. And as Amy mentioned, we met with the Tree, Shade Tree Committee. I'm not sure if we've mentioned it or not, but we were, Amy, with Amy's help and I've worked on a EAB grant that, that we received, twenty-six thousand dollars. That's the Emerald Ash Bor pest that gets in ash trees and then destroys your ash trees. So it could be a really expensive deal if that were to actually hit town. I know Sibley County, I think it's over by kind of by Bell Plain in the River Valley. They've located it in Sibley County. I just got word Lee Sewer County is quarantined, so. Does kind of pretty much seem imminent. So that's kind of nice to receive that grant. And we will match, we are matching up to our budget number, which was fifteen thousand. So essentially, we have thirty-six, thirty-nine, forty thousand dollars. Help take trees down to help with the stump removal and with replacement trees. Yeah.
Few years ago, the DNR went through a lot of these small cities and did a inventory of ash trees. Do you know if they did Arlington?
Well, we did it ourselves.
We did our own.
Yeah.
Do you know how many we have?
We have.
It's like thirty-five to forty percent of our trees.
About forty percent of fourteen hundred trees or something like that.
It's quite a bit. Large percent of our, percentage of our population. So anyways, yeah, a lot of, I'm dubbed the project manager with that grant. So I'll be keeping a close eye on making sure we're meeting all the requirements and that go along with it. And again, we decided we'll probably do an Arbor Day celebration and declaration in the fall, which seems to work best for us, get a Sibley's class to help us plant a tree and for the mayor to do his Tree City proclamation, Arbor Day proclamation. And we're also, was it the fourteenth year, Rich, that we're the Tree City USA?
One more than what do we have up there?
Yeah, I think it's the fourteenth year now.
This is the fourteenth year.
Fourteenth year in a row.
We received that award as well or designation. So that's good. I guess that's, that's my update in a nutshell. Does anybody have any questions or concerns or? Not anything? No?
No.
So I guess we could move to those bids then and.
Start with the snow. All the snow on.
Oh, sure. Well, anyways, if it's in front of you, that's Claire Grading. I would recommend that we, they bid on it. They were the only ones to bid on the grading of the streets.
Wondering lighting on your agenda.
Yeah. I mean, I, I have absolutely no qualms with that. I think they do a great job. They're great to work with. The price went up and talking with Jeff on the phone, it's, it was a necessity for his business. It's just the way things are right now. Price has gone up for, for their, able to run their business.
And they're just for the one season.
And they're for the one year, yeah. He's hesitant to do the three-year deal because of the state of the state, state of the world, which I understand. So I would hope we would accept them again. And then Hogg and Miller's to do the sidewalks uptown.
And the skid loader.
Yep, with their skid loaders, yep.
So we have sidewalks and, you know, the lots.
Lots. They did the three-year, yeah. Yep.
And then the last one is the dump truck.
Last one is, yeah, Door.
It's the only one we received for dump truck.
Right, and looking at that bid, he has just tandem axle dump trucks, which don't haul as much as we're used to. And we received his bid late last week. And I guess I would just ask if it's okay that I maybe reach around, not, I think the bid is good. There's nothing wrong with the price. What concerns me is the length of time it's going to take in removing snow. It's going to slow us down.
Dave, did you have thoughts on that?
I know the bid is fantastically cheap.
Yeah.
Did he say how many trucks he'll bring?
He could bring up to four trucks.
And what did, what did Miller's bring?
They could bring up to five trucks if necessary. And they had, they had quad axle. Well, we could.
You could.
But they'd be under a three-year contract then? How do we, would we have to have them for three years?
Could we get out of that contract if things did not go well with Mr. Door?
Snow hauler?
It would depend on how the contract is worded. You can normally cancel a contract for inadequate performance. The trick sometimes is how to define that.
And what, and the reason, I mean, we, we, we have to get things done in such a timely manner. We need Main Street usually done by six and then to move on to the school and have that done by seven in order for school, the buses, people can get in the parking lots because we do all that.
I suppose a contract clause could then define certain time deadlines. And if those deadlines aren't met, you know, that that would be cause to cancel the contract. But if I understand what we're talking about is canceling a contract in mid-season and hoping to get a replacement?
No, no, we'd have, we'd have to go with, we'd have to follow through, I think, with finishing out the year. Yeah.
It's a matter of.
Oh.
Three-year versus one-year contract.
Contending on how it goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, however it would, I mean, I just, I just don't know how it would go with smaller trucks.
The twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Since you've got these prices and did this, did you find somebody else? Is that where you were going with that?
I was going to ask if I can re, maybe do a little headhunting and see if there's anybody else who would want to put a bid in that would have comparable trucks to what Miller's provided.
Are we talking significant difference or money difference?
I don't, well. I don't know. I've never used those smaller trucks. But I, I mean, on a big snow, it's, you need all, every.
They put the bid in, the way I look at it, they've got, you know, yeah, they put it in last minute, but nobody else put the bid in, so.
Right.
I think maybe do a one-year contract with the option of renew if it works, if that works.
Yeah, we can just note that when we approve them.
Okay.
But that, it's only for the one snow season.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three season.
And just kind of touch base with them, give them know, know what they got to do, so.
Okay.
They just have to turn it and turn quicker.
Okay.
And they are, you know, they are charging by the hour. So I mean, if you get halfway through the season and they just are not performing what is need to be, you know, and we find another trucker that can help out, they could also come in at X number dollars an hour and
Okay.
sort of share the job just to get through the season.
Sure.
Your concern is the capacity of the truck.
That's what I mean. That's right. It's the capacity of the, the dump, of the box. Yeah, because I know Miller's, sometimes they, they bring a smaller truck and it's seconds and I got the thing filled up. Hey, I don't get very far. So not having those giant, I don't know what the cubic yards are or whatever, but it's, we got to move a lot of snow in a short amount of time. But, uh,
Okay, so.
You know, I'm open to giving it a try, I guess, if, if that's what we got to do.
There would be a three-year contract for all except the Matthew Dur. Now be a one-year contract.
Claire also wants one year.
Oh, Claire, I'm sorry, Claire also wants one year.
It's just Hogg and Miller.
Oh, okay.
That'll have the, through twenty twenty-five.
Got it.
So do we need to go back to Door and
Let him know.
Give him that proposal and then, and then we decide?
I think we can approve it for one year now and let him know it'll be for one year. And if he does well, then we'll bring it back and he can have it through twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah. I mean, hey, ultimately, I'm happy to have somebody.
Yeah.
Because I think it's hard, obviously, we have one bid. You know, it's getting hard to find people.
Right.
So I'm happy to have somebody.
Okay, is there a motion in to approve those as we've talked about here, as you see in here?
I'll make a motion to approve with the changes to dump truck.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sharpie, second by Councilmember Thomas to approve the snow removal contracts or bids, I should say, for the discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Okay, item B, the lights.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that was something in our CIP planned for this year, to do all the outdoor lighting at the community center to retrofit, to LED lighting from whatever it is we have now. And last year, the price that I got from this company was ten thousand, seven fifty. And this year, it was eight thousand. Right. So came in better.
And that one was in your packet.
Yeah, really surprising. The guy who drew it up was surprised too, but. So it's a state contract price pricing. We wouldn't need another bid.
So it was just.
Total turnkey deal. They come in and get it done and.
Is that all the, all the parking lot lights?
Parking lot lights, yeah.
Is there any exterior lights on the building itself?
Right, yeah.
They would be included?
Yep.
What about the parking lot light standards, the poles, as far as some of them, do we talk about rust? Maybe they need some?
So that's the next, that's the painting bid?
Oh, okay.
Yep, that would be included in that.
Okay, so this is just, this one is just the lights?
Yeah. I don't know if the rebate, I think, is on there too, what projected rebate was, which was two thousand something. It looks like, you know, our cost savings eventually will, shouldn't take too long.
Fairly quick payback based on projections. Did we just get one bid on that?
It's a state bid, so we all.
Oh, it's a state bid. You only get one, absolutely. Okay? Sure, yeah.
Okay, make a motion to approve the light.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sharpie, second by Councilmember Thomas to approve the exterior LED lighting for the community center. Any more, any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carried. All right, on to what was added.
Now it's the painting, Kirby. The two bids were on the desk in front of everyone.
Yep, and that, that's also for all of the metal surfaces outside of the community center. Includes light poles, roof flashings, a couple, a gas pipe, the mailbox support, the big roll-up doors. The sixteen bullards. A lot of, a lot of all that is rusting. Some isn't, but we're going to do it since we're painting the others and, you know, it's all faded and might as well include all of it. So Certa Pro came in at six thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight. That was our low bid. I'd recommend that, I guess.
Do they take them down to work on them?
The lights?
The li, the.
This guy said he didn't have to. They'd bring a lift.
What about, what about the rust? I mean, painting over rust.
Well, they're, they're going to.
They got a rust inhibitor on here, is what they.
Yeah. Yeah, they treat the, they take care of the rust at first.
Separate area, yeah.
Right.
Quite a difference in price in those two.
A lot of calls I made got people were so booked up. I don't know if that, that had something to do with the, the other bid, why it was so high, I don't know. This guy seemed to really want to get down this way from Certa Pro. Said he'd rather come this way to work than in the cities.
Now, the one bid, the high bid, has got everything detailed out as far as how many windows, how many, you know, doors, that type of thing. The other one is, I mean.
That has that too.
Okay.
Yep, under the general scope of work on the front page.
Oh, I see, okay, yep, yep, yep.
If you're looking at the numbers, they just have a couple discrepancies in how they labeled things, but it's all, it all matches up.
Okay. Okay.
And that was also, I should note, that was a CIP item as well. We had planned on twelve thousand, six hundred and we got that one down to sixty-five, so.
All right, is there a motion to accept the bid from Certa Pro?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Certa Pro Painters.
Motion by Councilmember Thomas, second by Councilmember Meyer to approve the bid of Certa, from Certa Pro Painters in the amount of six thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and that is for exterior painting on the community center or in the area of the community center. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. And the other, that was it, huh?
Yep, that should be all the suspending I'm doing for now. Spring's coming though. Gear up.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Kirby. Item ten, February ambulance report. Jamie, good evening.
Good evening. Okay. I was afraid I'm going to chew on this thing. All right, just a couple of things. So we sent out the surveys for the month of January and we've been actually getting a lot of surveys back from our patients. And there's been a lot, a lot of really good feedback and positive feedback, so this is excellent. We're just reviewing each one of those runs and I, as we get the surveys back, I do make contact with our staff, especially on those particular runs and kind of give them the, at a boy, at a girl, kind of, good job. This is good, keep it up, so, kind of important. As far as myself goes, I, now granted, I, I did give the Arlington ambulance set up with the Minnesota Ambulance Association. And periodically, we have quarterly meetings, but then I also get these legislative updates. And I, I brought this one, just kind of share some tidbits on what we're actually doing on that side of the spectrum. Some of the things that they're actually talking about regarding, you know, bringing forth to the legislative committee is everything from potentially changing the mutual aid ambulance coverage from twelve to twenty-four hours, especially with rural areas and staffing situations. To, they have a notation on here, certain stringent requirements on how EMS provides care and transports injured police dogs. So those are interesting things that have, are being brought up to the legislative committees. There's a couple other tidbits in here too that they're reviewing. One of it is allowing an income tax deduction for volunteer ambulance personnel and firefighters. And also pushing to, to kind of clarify that Medicaid would cover load leveling transports because it seems to be kind of. because it seems to be kind of s- some of the issues that we come into play with is when we're transporting individuals and our billing company submits our runs to insurance companies. They, the response we get from the insurance companies is they just kind of trickle-down payments. It's not as fast as we'd like it, and that seems to be crippling a lot of rural services too. So there's, uh, just a couple things that have been addressed with the legislative committees. Um, also, they're looking at increasing the EMS RB, uh, training reimbursement for services. And then also to, um, uh, one of the other ones. They're even talking about increasing the penalty for assault for throwing bodily fluids from a fourth-degree assault to a felony to protect our EMS providers. So there's a number of things that they're bringing to the legislative committees for review, and it's, they're really being proactive on that. Um, one of the things that, uh, Amy and I had an opportunity to sit down with the legislative auditor, and the report finally came out. Very big. But it has a lot of very, very valuable information in it. So if you want, I can certainly email you guys a copy of this report, I did not print this out, just because it's crazy thick.
Yes, I can email it to all of you.
Yes, it has.
And the paper.
Fabulous, fabulous data and information in it. Um, they, they cover everything from primary service areas, and especially with the EMS RB and their regulatory systems, um, ambulance service licensure, accountability, um, ambulance service sustainability. And, and this is a statewide document. This is, they, they covered everything in the state on this. So it's a very, very valuable document, and I'd love to get you guys each a copy of this, because it's got some great information in it. Um, and there's a couple things in there about Arlington ambulance too, so. Gonna do my little plug for that. Um, other than that, we just continue to hit the recruitment side of things pretty hard. Um, us, like every other service in the state, we're struggling, you know? It's just one of those things where not a lot of people wanna do this job. So we keep trying to look at different ways to make it a little bit attractive, especially being community-driven, and it's, it poses its challenges, but, um, we'll just continue to do that. Um, other than that, now, um, just a heads up, I did take the diesel truck up to Lester Prairie today. Just to let you know, there's some issues going on with it, um, we're trying to determine if it in fact is another bad injector, or if it's a fuel issue, it's a fuel pump, I have no idea. So hopefully, I'll get a call from Matt tomorrow to find out exactly what is wrong with our diesel truck. But, um, other than that, I don't have anything else additional to report.
Thanks.
Anything for Jamie?
I think.
Thank you.
Great, welcome.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Okay, item ten B, at the meeting on February seventh, uh, we were faced with looking at some ordinances, uh, doing first reading and ordinances. At that time, we felt that the timing was off, we needed more information, and, uh, planning and zoning need a little more time to get some information put together. So that topic was tabled, uh, on a motion by Morgan, second by Bachelor, and the vote carried. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to remove from the table so that we can move forward with dealing with these, uh, ordinances.
I'll make a motion to remove from the table the reading of ordinance three thirty-nine, three forty, three forty-one.
Okay.
Three forty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Thomas, second by Councilmember Sharpie to remove from the table the, uh, ordinances that were before us on February seventh, uh, for deliberation and a vote, uh, actually, not for, for a vote at this time, for action. Again, uh, motion by Thomas, second by Sharpie, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Motion carried, and we'll move into item number eleven. First reading of ordinance three thirty-nine, ordinance amending the twenty fourteen Arlington Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map pertaining to the property of southeast quadrant off Freedom Drive, Meford property. Phil?
Um, as I stated at the, uh, February seventh meeting, it's, we've discussed this before, they're looking to rezone it back to agricultural means, which would be perfectly okay, based on zoning regulations, given that there's an exemption from the city council when it comes to sewage and things like that. And then the previous one, um, three forty, I do believe, ordinance more or less relates to that, it's just more the comprehensive plan for it.
Okay. So these ordinance, uh, ordinance three thirty-nine and three forty are both dealing with a Meford property specifically?
Correct, yes, they're tied together, it's just.
Good.
We have to address zoning map in one, and the comprehensive plan in another.
Okay, and the first reading typically, um, it really, in these, it's very brief, uh, I can, I can read.
It's not complicated at all.
They're, no, I know, if they're in front of you, so if you had a chance to look at them, you probably have read them already. Um, if there's any discussion or changes or questions, at this time, I would ask for them. Hearing none, uh, the reading of ordinance three thirty-nine and three forty, this will be considered the first reading. Move on then to ordinance three forty-one and three forty-two. Um, those deal with the map, actually, for the comprehensive plan, ordinance amending twenty fourteen Arlington Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map pertaining to the property at the southeast quadrant of Freedom Drive. This is everything in that chunk of land except for the Meford property.
Right, and just to do a brief explanation of this, this is the remaining portion, if you look at the zoning map right there, um, pointing out to you guys. This portion right here of the V one, um, based on Minnesota statutes, given that they're separate, um, parcels that we would have to do another rezoning, so this is why we have this. Um, I did, I also want to emphasize, I did talk to the cu- the current property owner, they have no objections to it. So we, zoning-wise, I had a public hearing, um, about a couple, last week, no one had any objections to it, so zoning-wise, we're good to go.
Okay. Has there been any, uh, comments by that landowner publicly as to what he's planning on using that parcel for?
Well, per conversation I had with the landowner, he actually, it would benefit him to go back to agricultural means.
But in the long term?
Um, we didn't talk long-term.
Okay.
As it currently stands right now, it seems that he wants to do agricultural, long-term wise, it might stay agricultural, it might go residential, we don't know.
Okay, so he's, he's going to have it in crops.
Right. I know that the main concern was, um, and as the mayor was there during the public hearing, that there was concern when it came to it staying as commercial, um, but once I emphasized that it was going back to agricultural, um, there was, people seemed to be supportive of it. I also had a neighbor, um, I had two neighbors come to address it, one on Circle Drive and another one that was right on the outskirts of it, about right where the PI is, they wanted to make sure that it was gonna stay agricultural means, and I can guarantee, based on the phone call I had with the current owner, it's going to stay that.
Okay. So ordinance three forty-one, three forty-two, deal with the Ryerson property, which recently was the Truckee property, uh, now owned by Ryersons. And, uh, that then is going from a V one back to, uh, agricultural residence, residential agriculture.
Right, R slash A.
Yep. Is there any comments or questions about that? Hearing none, uh, this will go down then as a first reading for ordinance three forty-one and three forty-two. All right, moving on to ordinance, or resolution, I should say, nineteen dash twenty twenty-two, reestablishing pre- no, private, no, that was right, precinct places, polling places, I'm sorry.
This resolution is at the direction of the Sibley County Auditor, Mary Peterson. We have to, we have to pass this resolution, even though we are not changing. It's still here at the Arlington Community Center where everyone will vote, nothing, nothing is changing for the city of Arlington, but we must pass this reg- resolution, reestablishing it.
Not that it has anything to do with City of Arlington, but is Arlington Township doing their same, what, they don't, they do not use the facility here, do they? Anymore?
No, were they, uh, were they mailing much?
I think they vote by mail.
Does anyone remember Arlington Township?
But, okay. All right, resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty-two, resolution reestablishing precincts and polling places.
I'll introduce resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution reestablishing precincts and polling places.
I'll second it.
Res- uh, Councilmember Sharpie introduced resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty-two, second by Councilmember Meyer, and that is a resolution establishing precinct and polling places, that being Arlington Community Center. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, vote by roll, Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Sharpie.
Yes.
Three votes in favor, none opposed, two councilmembers absent, the resolution is adopted. Item sixteen, requests from Grand K for lower electric rate, all right, how's the plan?
Hello, councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, Ross, Amy. I'm Brandon Brinkman, for, on behalf of Grand K. Um, we run a small Bitcoin mining operation here in Arlington, where we're consuming twenty-five thousand, exceeding twenty-five thousand kilowatt-hours, uh, a month. The large cap for Arlington is supposed to be a little bit over seven cents a kilowatt-hour. We're paying a little over eleven right now, and I believe the wording might be wrong in that, is maybe large cap should be three phases, hour, but that's why I'm not getting.
That is why he's not getting, the, the fee schedule, that section was in the packet, and to have the large commercial rate that he's talking about, that seven cents a kilowatt-hour, you need to have three phases, because, uh, large ones have to pay that demand charge. And so it goes like this, your demand charge, if you're a large producer, and then you have to have three phases. For instance, don't have three phases right now, but they're saying that theirs is a steady use. So they're not gonna have the demand, they won't have that same demand charge.
Yeah, it's a co- it's a constant steady, steady flow. There's ten, ten machines running right now. I'm, I want to expand, but I have to bring more power into the building too, so I'd run another ten. So, you know, maybe close, close to forty-seven thousand, maybe fifty thousand a month for a kilowatt usage. Um, we are asking, we're, we're asking for, uh, six cents a kilowatt per hour, so we can expand. And with Bitcoin mining, there's a lot of questions, I'm sure, but there's a, a huge amount of heat being just wasted. Um, there's ways to harness this, but it all costs money. I've already bought a greenhouse I wanna put up and run the heat into the greenhouse, and maybe run fish and aquaponics systems and all this stuff, but I need, uh, a better electrical rate, and, um, they, with a steady flow of power that's always constant like this, sometimes they do offer cheaper electricity rates. Over in, uh, Glencoe, Minnesota, they're running, uh, almost a thousand machines right now, and they're getting, he wouldn't tell me exactly, but he said between three and four cents a kilowatt-hour, and he'd sell it to me for six if I wanted to bring my stuff over there, but I really wanna stay in Arlington and build here, because this is, this is our home, live Arlington. I'd like to see it, see us grow here. If you guys have any questions about it, or whether I could help answer it, but Grand K, we, we do, uh, right around five thousand dollars in electricity a month. But on, on this one property, it's only three thousand.
The only question that comes to mind immediately is if we make an exception for this, are we gonna have others that are, you know, is it, is it gonna start the domino effect?
Well, if they could provide such a large amount, I mean, these machines are, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars invested.
We could, we could put three phases in, it would be no problem, but what, you know, since the man, like, over, you know, you got that up and down peak, and I understand all that, but we're steady.
Right.
We're running twenty-four seven.
Right, yeah.
And if anybody else could do that, well.
Okay.
We'd be, as a city, we'd be kinda, I mean, we want these people to come in to do that kind of steadiness, because, you know,
it's the man, where it's up and down.
You could plan for it.
That's what hurts, yeah. And we would like to expand, Charlie knows that building is where we like to come down to.
Yeah.
Move a lot of them into that, and that's where we do our aquaponics and stuff like that.
So this type of steady usage is.
The old, um, laundromat?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Schultz's Electric. Yeah, we're in there, but the heat is.
Yeah, I feel blown out.
We got like three or four fans going in there and that's, too, so.
So you can heat the apartments up above with it, no problem.
We can heat the city office here pretty, or building pretty, it's amazing what they put out, but.
About a hundred and ten degrees right now, I'd say.
Oh, wow.
That's what pulling in fifteen-degree weather and pumping it through them, so. If they're, it's amazing a lot, actually, right now, so we have plans to utilize the energy.
Like Charlie's, that's what we do, is we build that building enough and add on, so we can use the heat to do these other businesses in town, wherever you wanna call them, so.
I'm just thinking out loud, I don't know if it's even an option to amend the fee schedule, adding a separate line item for someone with a steady rate, a large commercial user with a steady rate.
I think that would be the clear-cut approach. Otherwise, as the mayor indicated, uh, if you just make an exception to an existing fee schedule, uh, it creates questions or, uh, possibly, uh, um, confusion in the future. Uh, other users might, uh, uh, you know, petition the city, you know, for unique treatment also. But if we can carve out, uh, uh, a separate fee for a business that, you know, meets these requirements, uh, then I think it's clear-cut. Of course, it means if other businesses want to, uh, start up in town with a similar environment under that new fee schedule category, they would also be entitled to that rate.
Automatically.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it's a big thing, like I said, over in Glencoe, they rented a, or they bought a piece of land right by the substation, and they got one big unit in there with so many, and these are the Mormons.
There's some Mormons from Arkansas, there's some French Canadians from Canada, and, uh.
They're bringing in different trailers, and they just set them up in there.
And kind of the ducks from.
Canchas is supposed to have two big buildings over there, so we're just small.
Yeah.
If we had the capital to go on, we could, but he's saying Bitcoin's supposed to go up, so I'm brand, but then we'll see what happens. But no, we just.
We'll keep investing, we can grow big, so hopefully bring more electricity and.
And use more.
That's all we have.
Okay.
Thank you very much, unless there's any other questions.
Good, no, I don't hear that. Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So are we gonna have to do it like right up to?
Would administration wanna work on adding another?
Yeah, I was gonna say have me amend the fee schedule with that separate class, around six cents per kilowatt-hour, as long as it's a steady rate.
Yep.
Add a certain, because it could be a certain amount of usage too, or.
Yeah.
I mean, we're gonna have to make it detailed, right, to not end up having everybody.
Mm-hmm, we're gonna need a certain usage, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that can be brought back to a future meeting, okay, all right.
Yep, I can work on it.
Uh, item seventeen, requests for ad hoc committee to discuss Arlington Electric Utility.
This is actually, um, this was Howard Brinkman as well. You brought it up to me, yes, um, to discuss the Arlington Electric Utility.
Well, I didn't think I was getting to throw in the bus again.
You're kidding, yeah. As long as you were coming, I put them both on the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I've been talking about this a lot. Um, I think there's no intermediate person between the electric, what, McCloud, Minnesota Valley. I think there's issues with, we get people, we get McCloud changing our polls up, not that they're not doing a good job, they're doing a good job of, uh, you know, shooting trouble for us and stuff like this, but when they come in and they do our polls, it costs a lot of money, I don't know.
But when they come in and they do our polls, it costs a lot of money, I don't know what the prices are, but this Brian Moll that lives in our community, he works for a contracting company, and that's, he works for Minnesota Valley out of Montevideo, it's a co-op that bought, um, this company that he works for, a carrying, uh, company, and they're contractors. So you can hire them guys out, we can set up a thing saying, okay, we need this poll changed, this poll, we need, and right now, what really makes me upset is, like when that poll was hit over by Maverick, and it goes all the way out to our substation, that shouldn't happen at all, we should have OCRs, three-phase OCRs that maybe two blocks down, that'll trip, and you don't have the whole town go out. So, even though I work for Minnesota Valley Electric out of Jordan, but it's like, I don't know if they're doing the right things, I don't see them in town much, I don't know what they charges, but I know there's other contractors that will do that too. But I think we need an electrical committee to, it's like, we talked about the police committee, and we talked about ammo, you know, not a lot of them, but these are big items in our town that I think we're getting, I shouldn't say, yeah, I think we need more control on it.
I think, I agree a hundred percent with that, I think that, uh, you know, I've talked to Amy about this in the past, but I definitely think we need more control, 'cause as well as we're completely out of meters right now, and I think we're using.
McCloud.
McCloud, and then they're.
Charging.
Charging a, a surcharge for.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I mean, so there's a lot of things that need to be done.
Right.
And so I, I would be in favor a hundred percent.
Well, it's even like that big substation transformer, I don't know how long you had it in there and it started leaking. Well, we don't have personnel to go out and check it, so Minnesota Valley Electric should have checked it, or McCloud should have checked it. Not that I'm throwing your brother in the mess, but we should have got a check sooner, so we didn't have to buy new one, it could have been under warranty. So that really, that kinda upset me with that too, 'cause that's a lot of money. And I think it could have been under warranty if we would have caught it sooner.
I mean, do we, you know, that's the whole thing, you don't even have a comprehensive electrical plan to, Howard, who's, who's doing what.
Right.
That's something John and I have talked about, there's too many, too many people involved here. We have M V E C, and we have McCloud, we have nobody at the city necessarily, because those two are making the decisions, and there's a lack of communication with our electrical. Howie has the experience, his alignment, I learned a lot from him. Kind of like Choose Arlington got started, that was an ad hoc community committee, and look what they have done from marketing the city. So like, maybe get some people together who are familiar with electric.
I don't know if I wanna get any more committees, I want them retired, but anyway.
He needs experience too.
Yeah, he needs experience.
I could join the committee, but I have no clue.
Yeah, well, Brian Moll would be a good one, that guy that lives in town, get him on it, and then we can find a couple other ones that are tied in with it. I think Grant, um, from Glencoe, um, he was working for the, McCloud, he's retired now too. But we could probably pull in someone like him with experience too, but there's just, you know, it's like when they were gonna put that power line in down there for metal crafts, well, there's an underground going to the cabinet, or should we go over, hit it over to the three-phase overhead, well, you can keep it underground.
Yeah.
You put it up, you put it down there, a tree goes through it, you knock that whole service out. But there's also be some kind of, uh, safety switch that if something happens to the underground, we can backfeed. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff then. But I think our cost in doing the labor in this town, I think eats us up a lot. So, and I don't wanna make anybody mad, McCloud or anybody, but, uh, I think we need to get some regulations on it and how we look at it, and tell, ask them how you're charging us and why you're charging us for this. How many hours are you in town, you know, so, so that way.
And of course, we'd have a con, we do have a contract with McCloud that would have to be exam, examined and, yeah.
But, I mean, we, we need to come up with a long-term planning as well.
Yeah.
I mean, that's something we're not doing, we're just.
When I left here forty-seven, or thirty-seven years ago, I told them, take a quarter of the town, rebuild it.
Yeah, that's what should be happening.
We need, you know, tree service, we need trees, like I said, that time when that tree burnt, that took everybody out too, that shouldn't have done that. That should have went down a block or. There's OCRs, fusing systems that you can set up, so. That I need help with engineering, because there's a coordination of fusing, but. So, yeah, that's just what I'm saying, we should really get a committee going on our electrical, 'cause it's.
I think it's overdue.
Definitely need a committee with very ex, experience such as yours, I mean, otherwise.
Yeah, we can.
Like Matt said, I'd be in his category, I wouldn't have anything to add or bring to a committee, you know.
I don't either.
Right. So, but, so, yeah.
So are we still exploring the other option we discussed last year, is that dead or?
It's not dead, so that's something this committee should talk about.
What options are there?
Well, that was what we talked about as far as selling the electrical, but I, I talked to Howie after our last meeting and.
Oh, no. It's, it's one of them things, I thought it'd be kinda cool if they pay us every year for umpteen years, but they're just gonna pay for what your value is, and that's it, that's what they did to Lee Center and Montgomery, they, you know.
Just a one-time.
Well, they pay you out over so many years, but then after maybe ten years, you're done.
But with metal craft and stuff coming to town, you know, that's gonna make a big difference.
Yeah, we need to keep it, but if we get our costs under control.
Right.
You know, we can buy a new ambulance with the ambulance crew, oh.
She's smiling back there.
But no, I think we, I think we really have to, it's been bugging me for a long time.
No, I, it's needed, I, we discussed it even in council, so.
Administration work on, with Howie, and might be getting somebody, I have, where you would start?
We're gonna get a committee together, he's got some ideas.
Four or five people probably, or?
Yeah, get a committee together, which will report back to city council and make suggestions, recommendations.
I don't know if you wanna put a city council member on it or not, it's up to you guys.
I wouldn't mind being on it, actually.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Mm-hmm. Item eighteen, approved, deny, amending agreement with interim chief of police, Denley.
So Denley has requested an increase in his pay, he's, he was currently getting paid two thousand dollars a month to be our interim chief of police. He is requesting to be bumped up to thirty-two hundred dollars a month because of the amount of hours he's putting in. I got feedback that city council would like him at one meeting a month, so I went back to him, we had a personnel committee meeting where this was discussed. I went back to him and asked him to come to one meeting a month, he said yes, he plans on coming to the next city council meeting to give a report, talk about things that are needed with the police department.
I really don't think we have an option.
I was gonna say, I don't think we have a choice.
We have to have the chief of police.
Yeah.
Right, we need that, he's gonna have to start doing some stuff that needs to be done, being that we have budget stuff that needs to, we need bids.
Yeah.
We need some replacement stuff, so he's gonna be doing a little bit more than just kinda holding the reins until we find somebody else. I'll make the most to approve the amended agreement with the interim chief.
I'll second.
Motion by councilmember Sharpie, second by councilmember Thomas, to approve the, or approve amending the agreement with interim chief, uh, police Denley Complin, uh, and bringing his monthly pay up to thirty-two hundred dollars. More discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carried. Item eighteen, approved, deny, amending personnel policy, section eight point five.
This was also discussed at the personnel committee meeting last week, it was brought forward. And when, and doing payroll, I noticed that, um, there was an employee that was putting down eight hours of comp time when they were gone. And under the current personnel policy, that was not, that was not allowed to use eight hours of comp time. You could only use four hours of comp time. So the request is to be able to use eight hours of comp time, if you have forty hours in by Thursday, and you wanna use eight hours of comp time on Friday, this would allow staff to do it, it only affects five of us. There are only five salaried employees.
So it really costs, I mean, it's not an extra cost to the city.
It's just allowing us to flex our time.
Hours, hours that are banked there that can be used.
And it's, it's pretty common when you have salaried employees that, you know, if you're going to a doctor's visit, you just go to the doctor's visit if it's.
Get your work done.
Right, and just work extra, whatever it takes.
And that is an eight, there's a little cross on the agenda, you'll see through the four, but it didn't, I highlighted the eight because it didn't, yeah, it didn't, it's not forty-eight, just the little mark didn't show up very well.
So which number do we, we need eight, we need eight, eight, not.
Eight, not forty-eight, the little X through the four didn't show up very well. So we're looking to.
I'll make the most to approve the amended policy. I'll second.
Motion by councilmember Sharpie, second by councilmember Meyer, to approve the amending personnel policy, section eight point five, in regarding the, um, comp time, is that?
Correct.
Okay. Further questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no, motion carried. Uh, item twenty, update from McGuire, bill for DMI.
This is just an update to let you know I haven't forgotten about that bill that came in a lot higher than we were quoted from M V E C. You know, I reached out to M V E C and McCloud Power for help, basically finding my way through the bill to see if we're being overcharged, to see who should be paying for what. I did speak to one of the business owners about it already, who said, bill the other business owner, so I don't wanna get into that, 'cause each business owner is gonna say, bill the other one for the extra cost. So I want more information, I have to follow up with Ron from McCloud Power, he's the new CEO over there. He's been very helpful with me, so he'll walk me through it, I already got M V E C's sides, so now, that's what happens when we have all these people involved, so now I wanna get McCloud Power's side, and we'll come back with a recommendation if the city has to pay it, because we were quoted incorrectly, which might be.
You know, it's, McGuire's bill is a little more detailed too than what he had.
He did break it down in the packet, it was more.
I had to guess him, just, I was searching for it, man, I must have skipped over it.
Has the city paid anything yet, any part of it?
We have not paid for it yet, but Dave, Dave Syawick has paid us nine, ninety-five hundred dollars, which you see I had handwritten on there, and I thought maybe we could use, we do have to pay towards DMI with all those deed grants we received, maybe we could use this as part of our match.
Okay, any questions on the McGuire bill for DMI? Okay, we'll move along, miscellaneous business, committee updates, anything?
Yeah, well, you, you see a lot of the stuff that went on in the E D A, or not the personnel committee, as far as the chief and all that, and, you know, we discussed a lot of things, very lengthy discussion, so it was good, and Ross clarified a lot of things tonight in regards to some things. So one thing we did discuss, um, was re-looking at the, at the administrative assistant position. Actually, it was, you know, when we first got the position, or, you know, hired administrative assistant, you know, it was for, we used to take vacations, you know, another person, and then we had an issue and the person, you know, left, and we didn't revisit again, and I think that was a mistake after everything that's gone on, how busy Amy is with everything that an assistant is necessary with all the hours she's putting in, and so that's one of the recommendations that we made, and Amy's done some digging into it, looking into what the cost would be and.
The personnel committee, that information was sent to the personnel committee.
Yeah, yeah. So if that's something the council wants us to continue to, to look at or think we need, um.
Well, it sounds like it's needed from what you're recommending, right?
So then, yeah, I would think so, I guess.
I mean, is that the recommendation you're, you're making, right?
To post for it.
That is the recommendation as from the, from the, from the personnel committee, is we get a full-time assistant again back in there, 'cause we're running the same problem, I think, with Lisa, wouldn't we?
Yes.
Yeah, we probably never should have let it last.
We still have issues when Phil and I are out, today we had to be really careful, Lisa was out this afternoon to make sure somebody was in the office, we had a meeting with a developer again today, and we just had to be careful that I can't be in here with a developer, Lisa be out of the office. And we have to, we have to lock the office door, we've had to lock the office door when we were meeting in here once, and Lisa had to go to the bank. Then we have to lock, lock the office, and someone has to wait.
And that's not good.
Everything we have going on in the city now and into the future, we hope, I think it'd be.
No, I think. Well, and you were also trying to get an intern, which just came up, came up empty on that, so.
That was out for five months, that, that intern, we got zero applications.
So I guess, uh, would the council wish to, uh, direct administration to advertise for?
Is that what we're looking for, a motion to?
Are we ready to take that step we're doing, look at everything that?
The committee thinks we need it, you know?
Yeah, so we just need to make a motion to approve hiring an administrative assistant, is that it?
That's it.
Well, make a motion to approve hiring an administrative assistant.
I'll second.
Motion by councilmember Thomas, second by councilmember Sharpie, to, uh, hire an administrative assistant, and then administrator Newsom will take care of getting that rolling. Any discussion, questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carried. All right, anything else, and, Matt?
No, I think that was about everything.
All right, I went to a library meeting on March first, introduced to the new director, Andrew Kelton, K E L T, T E N, T O N. And he's interim, uh, director for our local library here, until the council, or the county decides which way they're gonna go with that whole program. One question they had, and I was supposed to bring back and just sort of keep in mind when we start talking about committees for next year, which will be, you know, November, December, whatever, they would like the rules, ordinance, whatever needs to be changed, so that a non-Arlington resident could serve a spot on the Arlington ambulance, or Arlington ambulance, Arlington Library Committee. There's, there are people interested that live in Green Isle, or have a rural address in Green Isle, rural address in Arlington, and, uh, they would just like to be able to allow one, uh, person from that geographic area to serve on that committee, so it's something the council should discuss towards the end of the year, when they start asking for committee members. But help me keep that in mind, I won't be doing the asking, but I, I certainly would, uh, I think that deserves some consideration. The only other thing I had was, uh, some of us got a letter in or email from Ed Tully in regard to, uh, not everybody got it, I, he could find some email addresses, couldn't find others. Joe Morgan got it, I got it, I think Shelley got, Shelley got it, and he is, uh, wants to throw the idea out there for a, a rec center for Arlington. I do have a copy at home, I'll, we'll get that to you for next meeting, so that we can all have the same information and throw in our comments at that time. I think it deserves some consideration on the city council, as far as whether you think it's a good idea and to pursue it in some way, maybe, uh, coordinating with the school, or whatever, but he has some good ideas, and, uh, and examples of other communities that, uh, that do have something like that. So again, I will get that information to Amy, so she can include it in next month's packet, and then we can discuss it, and where to go with, with it, I promised him that we'd, we weren't gonna ignore it, so we, we need to discuss that. That's all I have, any other items for discussion?
If I may ask the council to consider, if I could address the council again, I feel to bring a point of information for in our original comments to.
Okay, I do have a comment for you.
Okay.
Amy is staying.
I still would like to make my comment.
Oh, yeah, you, please do.
That is what, thank, thank you, council, thank you, mayor. To, to add to my, my earlier comment, I just wanted to discuss that, I was, in two thousand nineteen, I was working with an investment group to bring a hotel here in Arlington. And we, I was working with Amy and her team, and we drew up preliminary plans to build a hotel on the vacant lot right next to the car wash. It would be, we were looking at a fifty-six room, three-story high hotel, and we had an adjacent parking lot for that. It would be, we were looking at a fifty-six room, three-story hot, high hotel, and we had adjacent parking lot for that volume. And the interest was, because we have this community center, that we are underusing, because we don't have a hotel here in town. And, uh, with fifty-six rooms, you're looking at a hundred people percent, which is still, you know, what, twenty percent of what the pop, you know, with the five hundred people that come in here. Everything kinda dried up with, uh, COVID coming around, right, because nobody knew what was going on, so we kinda cabled everything. And, um, then with, uh, two twelve coming through, and, uh, things now loosening up around the, and with the advent of bringing business into Arlington during COVID, when many businesses were being shuttered, and, and towns losing businesses, there's a huge interest again into building this up. And, uh, and I wanna thank Amy for kinda working with, with me and, and my team to kind of, you know, lay out, you know, is it feasible, is it possible? So, so, great news that Amy is staying, so I do like that. Um, but, but, you know, I also read in the newspaper that, that, uh, economic development board in Arlington is also looking at building hotels, so I'd like to work with them.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, see how we can make this happen.
Mm-hmm, great.
And then, and then, uh, one other point, is looking at changing the name of the, this facility from the Arlington Civic Center to an entertainment, um, center. That brings a whole different venue and a viewpoint of what this facility is. Um, uh, we are bringing in, on April ninth, we are bringing in the first to have a endorsing convention here. And when I stated Arlington Civic Center, everyone immediately thought, you have a gym, a swimming pool, and potentially a race track around, you know, running track around the facility, which this is not, this is an event center. And I think that will bring a whole different perspective, when people come in and they look and they say, event center, I can hold events here. A community center, I can recreate there.
Correct.
So, so that would be one of the other portions, so thank you so much for letting me interject after the meeting, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Daryl.
I have one quick question, is the April ninth event open to the public?
The April ninth event can be open to the public, there is no cameras or video allowed, this is, uh, this is an endorsing convention for the Republican Party.
Mm-hmm.
We have new districts, so we are gonna have endorsing conventions for both the senate, we are now senate seventeen, and, uh, house district seventeen A and house district seventeen B, we're gonna be bringing in around three hundred individuals as delegates, and then, as, uh, probably as many as alternates that are come here. So for guests to come, I encourage guests to come, en- enjoy the process, and understand the process, um, but it might be standing remotely. Uh, we did, we take two of the rooms, if we do have that, um, I'm gonna talk to the, to see if we can take the other as overflow. But, um, uh, but we do have that, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Daryl. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I heard that, that was one of the weird, that's. Is there a second? Did someone second?
Yeah, Dave did.
Dave did.
I thought Dave made the motion.
No, that was John.
John made the motion. Motion by council member Thomas, second by council member Meyer to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, meeting adjourned at seven forty-four.